For the invocation tonight, we have Jake Kelly.
Could you join me in an attitude of prayer? God, we thank you for the inspiration of Jesus. Grant that we will love you with all our hearts, souls, and minds, and love our neighbors as we love ourselves, even our enemies. We ask you, God, in these days when the problems of our world are gigantic in extent and chaotic in detail, to be with us. Grant the members of this council your wisdom and be with us in all our endeavors, our times of joy and our moments of sorrow, until the day when there shall be no more sunset and no more dawn, in the name of Jesus I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Jeff. Well, now to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this meeting to order. Do we have any announcements?
The only announcement, we will be closed on July 4th, so we won't be open on Thursday, but we'll be back open on Friday morning. So, just one day.
Okay, alright. Next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is approved on one motion. Any item listed on the consent agenda, made by the request of any single council member or public in attendance, be considered as a separate item under the regular agenda. Anything you want to pull off via consent agenda?
Yeah, I want to pull number two C.
Okay.
I have one, Your Honor.
Any announcements? Okay, anybody from the staff would have pulled anything? No? Okay, and how about the public? Okay.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda items. Are you going to do yours first?
Go ahead, you go ahead.
Okay. A, two A, B, and E.
Okay, I second that. Okay? Any discussion?
Everything's up C, right?
Everything's up C.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor vote yes, post yes.
I vote to cast Jane, I vote to cast name.
Okay, I don't know how to do this. Okay, back in June, when you guys asked us to approve the bids, we had...
Do we have a motion?
Well, I'm sorry. At that point, my question, I don't know how to make a motion because the streets, when we did this in June, are different than the streets of today.
It was typo on the report. I fat fingered it.
It should say West Eighth instead of West Ninth.
So you just want to say motion to approve items to see? And then, and then...
It was me.
Okay.
And how do you...
Make a motion to...
To amend, to approve item two and amend item two C for whatever it is that needs to be amended.
Okay.
Amen.
I made the motion on consent agenda item two C to approve the bid with amended...
It's reminded that you... C and West Eighth Street and a short section of West D Street.
Okay.
It's the same, the same streets you approved. I, I, I fat fingered it on the council report. It should have said West Eighth, not West Ninth.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. That's all.
So, there was a motion made?
I made a motion.
Oh, second.
Somewhere.
We got, I think we got a second.
We got a motion, we second.
Yeah, things all good.
Who was the second? I made the second.
You too.
This one.
Yeah.
That was either guys...
See, see, you know what's what happened?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I vote to cast Jane, I vote to cast name.
Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda, and we've got a presentation by Gray Laney with Nebraska Public Power. Is he here? Okay, so we'll move on.
Yeah, who does Storm God?
I'll move up.
I'll get out on the job.
Maybe he'll get a manager. Okay. We'll go on with item number B. Approve an increase of the city of Cook's lease payment from NPBD by a half of five percent, increasing the percentage from now from twelve and a half to thirteen percent, starting October 1st, 2024.
So moved.
Yes.
I'll second that.
How about some discussion?
This is a carryover from last week. We actually had a discussion on that. We entered into a contract with Nebraska Public Power District in 2019, which extended our lease, a twenty-five-year period. NPBD actually lease, leases out our, our infrastructure, our electric infrastructure, poles, the whole nine yards. As part of that agreement that we had signed back in 2019, there was a provision that allowed for the council to increase the rate of the lease payment by a half a percent. And that was against the adjusted retail revenue that's recognized from Cook by NPBD. At the time, in 2019, we had a discussion. We decided, or the council decided at that time not to increase that rate by the half a percent. Here recently, we've been doing some work in front of you to see what the NPBD payout to the city of McCook has been over the course of the past few years. And so that printout is actually on the report. Patched report. I don't know if you can flip that around. But you can see the amount that we perceive each fiscal year. I shouldn't say each fiscal year, but here in fiscal year 23, '24, it's decreased fairly significantly in prior years. I think, I wonder how I looked at it. 2021, I think was probably the, the high year. I guess it was 22, '23. But you can see that following year, year 23, '24, we're down over that ten month, that one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that nine-month stretch, we're down right around $34,000. Don't know exactly why. Talked to Grant and Stan and some of the people over at NPBD, and they've said it could be a multitude of reasons. But obviously, that is an important part of our revenue stream. As part of our budget, we actually kind of earmarked those funds for the city's insurance funds. And so, to see that go down is a little bit disconcerting. That's the reason why we thought, okay, it might be a good idea to have the council come back and take a look at this and determine whether or not they want to utilize that half a percent. And other communities have done that. I think Scotts Bluffs are all the way at fourteen percent. We're maxed out at fourteen percent. We're twelve and a half percent right now. If we can go up to thirteen percent this year, we can't go beyond fourteen percent per the current contract. But as we talked about, trying to find additional revenue streams, additional revenue sources. This one was a little concerning. We saw that that number was going down. It seems to me like it would make sense to make the adjustment to make sure that, that difference is, I guess, kind of made up that we're seeing over the course of the past year, two years.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, alright. Any questions, council? Any discussion? I think absolutely we need to do that. Do we have a motion?
Would you add an I second, right?
Yep. Great. Got a question.
I vote to cast Jane, I vote to cast name.
Okay, next item on the agenda is an ordinance number 2024, page thirty-eighty, amending the city of Cook's code of ordinances by adding chapter seventy-five, section seventy-five point oh-one through and including section seventy-five point ninety-nine under the Title VII traffic code. Would the clerk please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance providing for the amendment of the city of Cook's code of ordinances, amending Title VII traffic code, adding chapter seventy-five utility-type vehicles, prohibiting the operation of all terrain vehicles, and allow the operation of utility-type vehicles on city streets, and setting forth provisions under which utility-type vehicles may be operated, to repeal conflicting ordinances and sections and provide an effective rule.
Ordinance number twenty-two forty-four dash thirty-eighty has been read by title, and I move to approve upon a second of three readings.
Second?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question for Kevin. I'm driving a UTV on the streets of McCook. Can I have a youngster sitting in my lap?
I think you would want to discourage that being here. I don't necessarily know off the top of my head if that's prohibited per statute, but common sense says that you probably don't want to put a youngster in a car seat or in some type of supplemental restraint system.
Right now, it's not, it's not an offense? It's not a typical offense?
I would have to go back and take a look at the statute to make sure that in a golf, or excuse me, in a UTV, it would require the same level of safety as within a motor vehicle.
So we're doing...
We're, we're getting into a situation where we're trying to put UTVs out on the street. And so there's going to be a process by which we're going to get that done, so.
But if I'm driving a vehicle, can I have a youngster sitting in my lap if I'm the driver?
You bring up, you bring up a good point, but I, I would have to refer back, back to the statute. Common sense tells us that that's a pretty, that's, that's not good practice. It's not best practice. I mean, good, better, best. We're going to want to do something that is safe for the operation of the UTVs out on the streets.
Okay.
I see lots of people driving with dogs on their laps.
Well, I, I think what councilman's getting at is do the child restraint laws, car seats, everything apply to UTVs? And I think that's an excellent question. I don't know.
I mean, I'm calling...
I think they absolutely should.
I'm calling UTVs, golf carts, whatever.
As city attorney, I think they absolutely should. And if our ordinances don't cover it, I will be strongly advising that we do make them cover that. I know we talked about age restrictions when we initially started this process. There's nothing in here, but that can be added if you wanted to say, okay. I know we talked about maybe the age of operators, potentially the age of passengers at one point in time. I know that we talked about restraint systems. I think it was Chief Smith when we had the initial discussions that had brought that up. It's not in here, but it's something we can take a look at for the third reading.
Well, driver, you'd have to have a driver's license, right?
Yeah, we covered that.
We, we, that's, that's established. You'd have to have a driver's license, not a learner permit.
Well...
But a learner permit with an, with an adult?
We said class O, right?
Class O license.
So it's a driver...
It's a driver's license.
Okay. I mean, that's my concern.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm...
That's legit.
I don't want, you know, a UTV on the street with the driver, with a youngster sitting in there. I mean, that's my concern. I'm looking at it from a safety...
I would have the same concern, but as far as taking enforcement action, if we're going to issue a citation and go through court, I just want to make sure that we're harmonious with the state statute.
Yeah, I mean, it's... In seventy-five oh-three C does say the total number, and I, this doesn't address it totally. It says, "The total number of persons on a utility-type vehicle, including the operator and all the passengers, shall not exceed the seating capacity as designed by the manufacturer of the utility-type vehicle." Now, you could have a two-seater, and you might have, so technically you'd have two people in there according to this, but it doesn't say specifically that the second person has to be sitting in the second seat. So it's...
So are UTVs considered vehicles? I assume they are.
Yeah.
Per state law, the driver, each front seat occupant in the vehicle and all children six years of age and less than eighteen years of age must wear occupant protection systems.
That's, that's where we'd have to go back to the statute and make sure that we understand exactly what that means as far as the UTV is concerned. It, it describes what it means for a motor vehicle, but for a UTV, we have to make sure it describes what it means for that.
So this is something we could come back to later if we see this as a problem?
Or if we could look at it before we get to the third reading and make an amendment. Prefer to do that.
Would you do, could we do that, then?
Let's bring it back one more time.
Yeah. What, Daniel?
Yeah, let's bring it back one more time.
Yeah.
Let me look at that.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, I've got a few questions. So be patient with me. Sorry. Under seventy-five oh-two, operation of all terrain vehicles prohibited. I know we're talking all-terrain vehicles, but it says nothing about parades. I know a lot of times in, in heritage days, parades and such, people like to run them, but according to seventy-five oh-two, that's not allowed. I guess I'd ask the staff to include parades into that.
I think, what's seventy-five oh-nine say? All terrain vehicles and utility-type vehicles may be operated on the streets and highways without complying with this chapter while in parades, which is authorized by the state of Nebraska or any department or board.
Thank you. Alright, same paragraph, seventy-five oh-two. Except as otherwise provided, do authorize all terrain vehicles may be operated by, within the public sector, by authorized city personnel during the course of the normal duties, educational personnel, and public power utilities. So we're talking city of Cooks, city schools, and Nebraska Public Power, Black Hills Energy, cable. How do we define public power utilities? These are the cable satellite people, too. There's internet contractors. Because we always get requests to put underground cables and underground bolts and all that, so I'm assuming they're public power utility, maybe?
Maybe, maybe not. I mean, I would say this probably, I would not say it's public. A lot of the requests we're getting are private companies, so. So we probably could take a look at that as well. I know when we looked at it, we're trying to figure out how do we account in order for us to be able to operate and do the work that we do, we need to be able to access ATVs and those kinds of vehicles on a regular basis. Are UTVs? As far as the other entities, I know that school uses those. I know that we've seen NPBD utilize that. We can look at language. I'm just not sure exactly. I don't know if it'd just be public infrastructure. I don't know. I think it's a lot of law which privately.
Yeah.
That's the difficulty with this ordinance is that you're trying to carve all sorts of things out and take into consideration. And that's why we said this was complicated from the very beginning, because there are things that we know are probably going to come up later on that we hadn't thought of that will be problematic. And so, I, I know that North Flats had their struggles, and other communities have had their struggles with this. We can take a look at that and see if we can try to address it, but I, I know we're probably not going to cover everything or any entity that might be utilized.
Other things for consideration, Daniel. Seventy-five oh-six registration, there's a hundred dollar permit fee. If the police department is doing it, is that going to their budget or is it going to general fund?
It'd be general fund.
Okay. Somebody loses their registration sticker. I'll peel it off, whatever. How, is there, again, just for consideration, is there a process by which they've got to go back through on that? Same sentiment is, I have a UTV, but my registration sticker, and I sell it to Jared. What's the process for Jared now? Because that registration sticker is mine, correct? It's listed to me at my home address and such. How do we transfer that to the new owner?
The new owner would have to re-register and pay the new owner dollars.
Okay?
Yeah.
You've got to just get a different kid.
Yeah, so...
Well, as a replacement, Jerry, I mean, you basically would have a record that Jared had another UTV. So you come in and say, okay, someone stole my registration. You just give him a replacement. I would think, wouldn't?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fifteen dollars for years.
Okay.
I mean, what they come up with?
I'd say fifty dollars.
Sure, right. Right. We're going to do the inspections. The city's going to do inspections. What kind of liability are we going to be dealing with that? I, I think of our firefighters who do the baby seat installation and stuff. Just asking a rhetorical question here. Do they have specific training in that? Does that cover our collective liability of they go down the street and car seat falls over or something?
The car seat installation is done by employees from the hospital. They utilize our apparatus, pay to do that.
Okay.
So it's not actually city firefighters that are doing that?
What we had talked about on this was to have city personnel get trained so they have the proper training, so they know what to look for to make sure that it complies with the ordinance. I did have that conversation or conversation with Jim Lewis. He didn't commit to anything, but that was kind of what we were thinking was they could help us with this so we could get the proper people trained. The other option we had mentioned was just say, okay, you know, if you go to somebody that does this on a regular basis, whether it's Jim or somebody else, they make sure that they sign off on it and they provide us proof that they signed off on it. Inspection.
Okay, so what do we pay them? What does the city pay Jim Lewis if he does it? We charge a hundred dollars for registration fee. What would Jim reasonably ask, say, well, my motorcycle mechanic gets a hundred dollars an hour, going to take him half an hour to do an inspection? So, you know, if, I, I think it'd be better to have a private trained specialist do it, but...
I think we're going to charge him whatever he wants to charge.
And they have to pay that up?
They have to pay him, and then they show us that the certification was approved.
Okay, is that going to be in here? Or would that be a contract with them or...
Multi-contract with us.
Okay.
That'll just be part of the registration process. Then those guidelines and rules will, we still haven't created. We're still in the process of doing so.
Okay.
Because I, I mean, it'd be anybody that would be an expert in that area that would have the authority, whether it's Lewis Motorsports or whomever. But I don't even know how you would, I don't even... Let it to one.
How does North work or North Flats?
I think they're doing it now.
Yeah, they do. Their police department does it. So they, that, but they don't have another expert here?
Just, no. I think they were trained, so that's the only reason.
Is there training?
That's what we wanted to talk to Jim about.
And that seems to be a pretty simple checkoff list, isn't it?
I just didn't know if there was something like the state had provided for training years.
No, the state hasn't.
Yeah, on our, on our inspection application, headlights, front reflectors, blah, blah, blah. We have a US Forest Service qualified spark arrester, but do we include something here on mufflers? Does it have a regular muffler? This ordinance said you can't have cut-out muffler, so I'm just curious on the application. Do we put a little box in here for mufflers or whatever? Because you know, if you get a windmill, it's going to take a mile. You have one person that does that.
I'm guessing you're concerned about the noise. We have separate noise ordinance that would deal with that potentially. Or you could go ahead and add to it if you wanted to at a later time.
No more application to...
Yeah. And, and the language that we have in here, I think that that was directly from North Flats.
Correct.
As far as what they were, and I think that that was probably maybe taken from... Yeah, I can't remember how that worked, but everybody kind of...
Seems like everyone originates from Norfolk.
Yeah, Norfolk seems to be the one that, yeah.
On, also under seventy-five oh-six registration, sub-paragraph three, it talks about fixing the, the registration decal in a conspicuous place. Can we possibly assign a specific conspicuous place? Because one person may think conspicuous is this side. I'm thinking of park permits. Always goes lower left part in windshield. That's where the law enforcement looks. So is it possible we need to get a little more specific on...
Some of these don't have windshields. I know my home does not have a windshield.
Well, it's sort of like boats is on the front quarter. Maybe do like the front quarter panel or something.
What would be easiest for your guys, Kevin?
Something on the front of the vehicle that's easily seen as soon as they approach the vehicle. Something that they can look at and say, there it is.
There it is, okay.
I mean, I guess making it, making it too restrictive might exclude or include certain types of UTVs, but maybe a little less restrictive might be more inclusive of the different brands of UTVs available to consumers.
And we could have in three different spots that maybe would be acceptable.
And also under seventy-five oh-six registration, paragraph C, where it says the city reserves the right to suspend or revoke the registration of this UTV, blah, blah, blah. Is that after a court action? Because I don't know that we, the city, have the authority to just arbitrarily revoke somebody's permit, do we? To me, it's bad. We reserve the right to suspend or revoke the registration of a UTV within the city for violation of any provision of this chapter. So it kind of makes it sound like we're the judicial now and we're not. So is that meant as a result of some...
But this is not state statute. This is, I mean, the ci, I mean, the city... So we, we would have the latitude to go ahead and pick and choose how we want to enforce this, different from the state, like I just mentioned. And we kind of waited for the state to try to get through, iron some of this out, and they chose not to do anything. So on our end, I think we have every right to say, look, this isn't authorized by the state. This is authorized by the city. The city makes the rules. The rules are what they are. And if you aren't doing what you're supposed to do, then we're going to go ahead and revoke it, just like, I mean, there are other instances where we have the authority to revoke, you know, whether it's a peddler's license or whatever the case may be.
Okay.
We're just revoking the license.
Okay, but there again, that's, you're acting as court. You have Officer A goes down the street, sees somebody being a knucklehead, but they're UTV, and says, well, usually we should permit. So would we have, would we send the chief a report saying knucklehead A was, was abusing?
We could, we could probably take it to the court and say the same thing. Okay, we're going to go ahead and revoke them. And go that route as well, too. And I don't know why we couldn't. We have ordinances that we enforce all the time.
If we don't make the fine waiverable, ultimately it would end up in front of Judge Payne anyway. And she always asks me for sentencing recommendations on my other cases within outlined criteria in our ordinances. And so that there would be a check and a balance. I would be first overseeing making the allegation, and then Judge Payne would ultimately decide what the fine is and whether we impound that or not.
That's my concern, Nathaniel, is that we don't have an overreach of authority just because we may not like that person or whatever. There's got to be some assurance to the public that there are checks and balances.
Yeah.
It's going to end up on your desk. Okay.
So that, let's just make the fine non-waiverable, which is easier now.
Okay, I checked off my list. I'm happy. Thank you, Chief, and General, thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Are you ready for the question?
Yeah, I did my homework on that one, didn't I?
All those in favor vote yep, I'm saying. Did you hear it?
Jerry. Do not see my... What do I need to do?
I got a spurting yellow over there. Are you connecting?
There I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
I vote...
It doesn't like me.
It just, it just...
Do you want us to revoke?
Yeah, I revoked it.
Okay.
Does that count twice?
Do we all want to revoke twice?
I live in Chicago. I'm going to pull it off then.
I vote to cast Jane, I vote to cast name.
I know you did, right?
Yeah, I know you did.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a presentation by Randall Girdle of the topic for consideration for the city council agenda regarding a request to include golf cart vehicles and proposed ordinance number twenty-two forty-four dash thirty-eighty. Hi.
How are you?
Pretty good. How are you?
Pretty good, pretty good. I, I guess, you know, going, going to different towns and stuff, where they let people use golf carts. I had a golf cart at the house. I pretty much went through everything I can to get my street legal. Headlights, taillights, turn signals, mirrors. I put the little chip in, it's over twenty miles an hour. I've got the seat belts. I've got everything that, you know, all these parts can be put on. The MasterCard guy out there... The MasterCard guy out there on J Street does it. That's why I wish you guys would exclude golf carts and golf cars from the city use UTVs. As a deal, you know, handy, you know, we get on, take the kids to the park, they go to the swimming pool, make them cook a place where young families would want to come to.
Are you saying exclude or include?
I, I think you should be able to use golf carts.
So you want to say included?
Yes, included, yes, included, yes, yeah, included.
So is that just, so I remember one of the reasons why, it wasn't because they didn't go fast enough, but you said the chip.
You put a chip, you put a little chip, it's just a little bit.
Like a governor override.
It's a governor, yeah, yes.
I think that the main question was, in the beginning, they didn't go fast enough to keep up with traffic, but if you have a chip thing.
You have a chip.
And if you have seat belts, turn signals, all those things. So that would eliminate some golf carts that aren't legal then, correct?
Yeah, you would have, you'd have to put some.
You'd have to change that statute, as long as you can go over twenty-five or twenty miles an hour.
Well, I think the chip, in different, different ones, I think is, I'd have to, and he was gonna come tonight, but he didn't get back down, the guy from MasterCard. It's either nineteen or twenty-two, I don't remember what he told me, how fast to go.
Cause I don't know, just sort of like the interstate, is there a minimum speed that we would have to keep? You know what I mean?
Oh, Randall, what is your top speed on your, your?
It's either nineteen or twenty-two.
Twenty-two. And what's the, what's a UTV?
Oh, they go like forty-five or something.
Okay, so don't, you don't want to drag race a UTV then, huh?
No.
Okay.
Can you?
But I think, sorry, I think the main question, uh, we, we talked about that day was not including cars, it was just because they weren't fast enough. We can keep up with the speed of traffic. But if they're going at speed, I don't see why, if you have seat belts and turn signals and there's.
My concern is that every, the occupant is in the seat, not sitting on somebody's lap, that's my concern.
Are you sure you haven't seen that before?
I know, I have never seen that, Randall, I have never seen that, I know. And I understand, but do you understand where I'm coming from, Randall?
Yes, I do.
It's a safety concern, I am, I understand it's, it's, it's fun, it's fun to do, but I, I understand that. I don't want to have to be responsible saying, well, you get in an accident, some little kid gets killed and run back and sit. So cities should never allow that to be on the street.
I didn't tell you though, you know, you guys have a smart face, but, but you know, you should have to have a driver's license to operate him, you know, all that stuff.
So I found this, we found the state statute that governs this question. It's sixty-six, three, eight, one, and sub-two, A. It says that a city or state may adopt an ordinance for the operation of a golf cart on its street within corporate limits between hours of sunrise and sunset, on streets with a posted speed limit of thirty-five miles per hour or less. And a golf cart vehicle shall not be operated anytime they, uh, on a street, uh, let's see, in excess of twenty miles per hour. So I think that's the problem, is most golf carts don't go twenty miles per hour. So it says, on streets with posted speed limits of thirty-five miles per hour or less. When operating a golf cart vehicle is authorized under this subsection, operators shall not operate such vehicle at a speed in excess of twenty miles per hour.
So it shouldn't, shouldn't go nineteen or less?
Yes.
Yeah.
They can't go over twenty miles an hour?
Correct.
But they can go to thirty-five mile an hour zone?
Yes.
Yeah.
It has to be at thirty-five mile per hour zone or less, but even then, you have to go twenty miles per hour or slower.
In a golf cart.
But he was just saying thirty-five, governors that go up to nineteen, so nineteen or less, governed at. So technically you could have, you'd have to make sure that they be governed at nineteen, whatever, should have seat belts, mirrors, turn signals.
That's probably for the, I don't know, the numerous, that works after you get to five, it probably.
Oh yeah, I'm sure there's tires on the ring, yeah, so.
Residential is twenty-five miles an hour, if you're going nineteen, you're pretty close to what you should be doing in a residential.
One thing I'm gonna bring up is, I found that all UTVs purchased after March of two thousand eight are required to have a roster rollover protection. Something to consider.
That's UTVs.
That's UTVs, yeah.
But your golf cart will not have rollover protection or whatever, just FYI, for safety, you were, you were concerned about safety, Jim.
Right, I understand.
I'm just playing.
But they don't go, they can't go as fast as, a golf cart can't go as fast as UTVs.
Probably one of the issues is with the nineteen miles an hour.
Was that Jared?
So you're saying nineteen miles an hour or less, cause they don't have rollover protection, so would probably be another reason why.
Yeah.
Yeah, I should be governed at that level.
So is there any type of appreciable difference between a golf cart and a golf cart vehicle?
Well, from what I can understand, I looked into, a golf cart is like when you drive, when you go to play golf, you know? A golf car is like the beer girl drives, you know, it's got a, if they were haul rigs and stuff.
That's kind of how I understood it. Joel Smith has done some work on this in the past, and so we would probably want to get some clarification. That's probably who I would call over to and just say, okay, it's called a golf cart.
Well, the other thing, since I've been kind of talking to people about this, there's, there's several other, you know, car dealers. If this went in, they would, they'd be interested in the dealership just to do these, you know, club car or different name brands, so.
And I had something, I spent a week in West Palm Beach, and that's what we rode around in. It was free, all you had to do was tip the driver, and it would, he said the top speed was twenty-five miles an hour, and you could go two mile radius downtown West Palm Beach. And they were everywhere and people thoroughly enjoyed them, and it worked very well.
Did you have seat belt?
Yes.
Okay.
But they said it was basically, it looks like a little car, but it's a golf cart. I have a picture of one, cause I, there was a pink one, and I asked Justin if he would like to drive that in the book. He said no, but Shelby said she would.
So what do you want to do, when I ask city staff to bring this back for, at the next meeting?
Yeah, let's do it.
You guys probably want to discuss it before we do anything.
Right, that's one of the reasons, bring it back.
And if we didn't include the, the UTV ordinance, because we didn't want to stop UTV ordinance, doesn't want to include, you know, separate ordinance for this.
So that's what we'd have to do, it's a separate ordinance for, which wouldn't take that long to do, but.
We'd probably want to incorporate it into these ordinance, that'll not create a. So we could, we could make some of these ordinance, and then we could.
Well, I think, I think golf carts, yeah. Garrett, you want to add anything?
We're talking about.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I found that with Randall, my, my thoughts are why exclude it, but, you know, and maybe they're, you know, they're governed differently too. You know, maybe there's two different kinds of permits, maybe, maybe that's asking too much, but I guess when I got behind this whole thing, I'd called you before the UTV thing ever got brought up, I had always pictured a golf cart. I never really cared all that much for UTVs. You know, like I said, we have one that we plot around the house, we have back roads that we can get over to mom and dad's from. The kids love it, they think it's fantastic.
Didn't.
Yeah, there's no seat belts, it's kind of lollies, but. But anyway.
It's all said too.
Long and short of it, I, yeah, I, I don't think nobody needs to be going thirty-five miles an hour in a UTV. I think you're gonna have more problems going that route than you are with a golf cart, personally.
I mean, would you, if, when this passes, would you be driving your, your UTV on the street then?
Yeah, well, that's the, I, I have just a golf cart now, so.
We just have a golf cart, so.
So I'd have to upgrade, so.
And it's more of like what Randall said, the, the golf car, not the cart. Like it, it has the seats, multiple seats, you know, and lights and all of that.
The only thing it does have is a seatbelt, but I would say.
We would get them if we.
If we had to, we would, but the problem with a seatbelt on a golf cart, in my opinion, is you don't have a rollover protection system. That's just a canopy, so if you were to roll that, you were seatbelted in, I think you'd be in a much worse situation. That would be my thought.
Yeah, cause most of the time, if you bail out, you were.
Yeah, I think you're only going fifteen to twenty miles an hour. Maybe that's not as bad, I don't know.
You only break your fibula instead of the.
Right, walk it off.
Anybody else have any comments?
Thanks, Randall, I appreciate it, thank you.
My, that would be more perpetual, see how. I, I would just say, if you're thinking about golf carts, it seemed to me that they're kind of like bicycles in speed. And it would be more, safety wise, it would be more appropriate to have people wear helmets. Don't you think, Darcy? You're a biker. You know what, Sid and his wife.
Not a biker.
Sid, Sid and his wife. Get your head, get your head, that you're gonna get hurt at that speed.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Randall, the city staff was.
Yeah, well, we'll bring back for discussion, I, so the council can talk about it. Just a little, I'll call over to Joel. I had, one of the city attorney in Indianola, we had a golf cart discussion that screwed, I think the entire town in Indianola there. So Joel is pretty bred up on, on golf cars, golf carts, that kind of stuff.
Depends on if it's legal section, my town culverts them every Fourth of July, all over the streets on Fourth of July. I had a golf, legal, but we do it.
And that, that was, that was the problem, it was old Tupperware's Day in Indianola, and everybody was driving around in their golf cart, and there was a trooper with the state patrol that was handing out tickets, so.
That's, that's called bougie.
Yeah, it was, it was on council.
Now they're gonna read in the paper that they can get the city attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah, call, call, get all the golf carts.
Okay, we'll look forward to getting the information. Uh, update regarding the swimming pool project and ballpark.
Well, good news in the swimming pool, I guess, I think it's good news in the swimming pool, we've got a date set. July seventeenth is the date for the pool to be open. And so we're really excited for that, we've got a couple things that we're finishing up on over at the pool. The backflow preventer, I think, will be installed either this week or the following week, I know they're still waiting for the electrical panel. But I think by and large, everything is pretty much done. The state will have their inspector coming out on the fifteenth. That's why we've gotta wait for a little while to make sure that we've got the CEO from the state, the certificate box, let's see. So that, assuming that that passes, seventeenth will be our opening date. We've got quite a few lifeguards, I talked to Lily at the end of last week, I think. There are two or three more lifeguard applications that have come in just that day. She said that it was almost dizzying, so there are people that are excited, and I think there's gonna be one more lifeguarding class. And it would be the week, I think it'd be like the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, potentially. They need to have five people sign up for that class, otherwise they can't hold it, that's per the Red Cross rules. And part of it is because there's a training that requires five people specifically. So if there's anybody that's interested in being a lifeguard, cause we'll take all the lifeguards we can get, please sign up for that class, it's gonna be your last opportunity that I'm aware of here locally, you go ahead and become a lifeguard this year, so.
On, on the pool, what are the hours?
Uh, I think, we're talking about the stand, one to seven, I think is kind of what we were talking about, so, and then we'll kind of.
During the week that was typical, there was like one to five on the weekends, but that can be.
Right, so that's something similar to what we've done in the past. And we are looking at the possibility, I know that we've discussed, you know, extended hours past August first or whatever. We're gonna look to see what we can do on the weekends, we just gotta see what our lifeguard schedules look like. What we have available, if we have to close a section of the pool down, because we don't have enough lifeguards, we can look at that as an option as well too. We need to make sure we've got a pool operator, our pool operators are gonna be available, that's one of the things, you can have someone on site. And, and Renell Mooney's gonna serve in that capacity as our primary, we'll have some others that have that ability as well too, but I know once school starts purr, the things get really busy, and so that can be hard. So, but we'll look at additional options, trying to figure out how to get as much pool time in the summer, I know everybody's excited. We're excited, I mean, you know, we, we can't wait for this thing to open up, we've been talking about it now since two thousand fourteen to fifteen.
Do we have any parking space for all the people?
I mean, you know, I, I, I think, I think we'll be, I mean, yeah, we're, I know it's gonna be like a bicycle football game, you're gonna have people.
Exactly, that's what we're thinking.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's okay, I mean, it's a month, we, we can kind of work out some of the bugs too, that's the good thing. I did have some people that asked, we're gonna be opening up for private events in the evenings, I don't want to even mess around with that right now. We gotta figure out how to get our facilities wet, and then we can move forward, no funding intended. On the ballpark, moving forward, first agreement is signed. And made, is sent over to paperwork to.
McCook Abstract.
Abstract, do some title work, and then we're gonna send it over to the surveyor as well too. So that way we can make sure that we've got something that, that we are all comfortable versus the dimensions of what the ballpark is, or the property that we're on, it's not just the ballpark, but it's, it's gonna be the whole kit and caboodle. We are actually, Tara, Kyle, myself, Mayor Taylor, Tyler Plonsky, we're trying to put a pool, or a pool for me, I have a pool on the brain, ballpark committee together, trying to come up with some good people that would represent a number of different sports that would be represented out there at the complex, so not just softball and baseball, but we're also looking at soccer. And, and so working through some names, making some phone calls to see if there's some people that are interested, we'll bring it back to the council, the council, they can go ahead and establish that committee. Gosh, anything else you can think of, Tara, Kyle? Just a lot of conversations. Exciting. I've been able to answer some questions, if anybody has questions, feel free to give me a holler, I'm happy to talk about it. And, or if it's not me, we have other staff members that can do that as well too. I think that this is a good thing for our community, not just with respect to the ballpark or sports complex, but also residential and commercial development, that we've got an opportunity that we've not had in the book for a long, long time. So, and I've heard nothing but positive, so, I don't always hear them either. I think that's it.
Okay. Any other things? Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation by Ryan Patrick of Sports Good Solutions.
Ryan's on, but this is Mike, and I had the wrong title too, where I just had another four, so that's on me, but.
It's okay, I, I, I was, I was busy trying to get.
I was gonna clarify, I'm not Ryan Patrick, I'm Mike Roth.
I wasn't sure exactly, you know, what this was.
No, no, thanks, Mayor Taylor, council members, and city staff, thank you for having me again, and Mike Roth, Lauren Race, Chairman of Cook, Nebraska. I work for High Level Promotions, I'm a collegiate coach and a former club coach and former high school coach, but I work in sales and marketing, High Level Promotions is, been in talks and discussions with Nate and his staff about all the exciting buzzes coming into McCook, Aquatic Park, the sports complex. And we specialize in that niche market in helping bring in naming rights and corporate sponsorships. That's what we specialize in, and that's what we're, we're hoping to negotiate with Nate and everybody to come in and help you guys with your operational maintenance, a part of the, the construction project that usually isn't really thought about. That's where we specialize, coming in and finding your corporate sponsors, maximizing the value of the ballpark, and, and tying those into our partners and our relationships that we already have in this industry. And one of the key things that we do that really kind of is unique to us is, there's no, there's a low risk on your part, because we don't, we don't take a fee, we don't have a retained fee, we put all this together and we go to work, and then we're paid after we. We don't have a retain a fee. We put all this together and we go to work, and then we're paid after we, we bring you those, those naming rights and sponsorships. And through our relationships, which is one of our, really our core values, relationships matter. We have, we have a, a long list of people that we work with that specialize in doing ballparks, from nets to lights to turf, along with the corporate sponsorships and the vendors and, and like for your concessions and stuff. So we know how to maximize what you're doing at the ballpark, at the sports complex, the aquatic park. And any things like that that, that you guys are putting in here that's, that's youth sports related and more. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys had an understanding. You have a little packet in front of you that kind of goes through that, and some of the key aspects of that. One of the notable things that I wanted to point out in here is, um, through our partnerships and the, and the founders of, uh, HLP, which is High Level Promotions. Uh, an example was Clyde, Texas, a town of about three, almost, you know, just under four thousand, uh, population. In about thirty days, they raised a million dollars in, through corporate naming rights and sponsorships that they're using for a long term in the operational maintenance of the, of the ballpark. And allowing them to expand into other areas that they weren't quite thinking about at the time with the complex. Splash park, pickleball courts, tennis courts, soccer, things like that, that you can, you can add to a multiplex, uh, ballpark or a complex like that. Any questions for me?
Mike, do you remember how much the Clyde, how much of the con, you build that, do you remember?
I wanna say that was between, if I remember right, that was between that fifteen, twenty million.
Seventeen, I think.
Seventeen, yeah. Yeah, it was right around that.
It's got, yeah, it's got a four flats, it's got a championship baseball, it's got, uh, soccer, it's got pickleball, it's got sand volleyball, it's got splash pads.
It, it has, it has all of that, and they didn't originally think of all those additional things as they were, were, you know, the founder of that, that came up, the concept of the ballpark. That was part of the thing, part of the, the, the expansion piece that we started, you know, talking to and working with them on, and they were able to do is they just finding these corporate sponsors and naming rights. I know, I think it's Dr. Pepper's, one of their big ones that they, they, they brought into the ballpark and, and, uh, really helped them expand into other areas and really make it really feasible for everybody in the community.
One of the things that I really like about this is that we've been talking to Mike and Ryan and Colton, I see Colton's on there. Um, and, and trying to work through, on the purchase agreement side. Um, you know, the seller had some things that they wanted, uh, as far as some naming rights and some authority on that end. We were working with Mike and, and Ryan and Colton to make sure that on our end, we weren't going to, um, eliminate the ability to go out and get sponsors, uh, or to seek some sponsorships, to find additional revenue to help with whatever, whether it's gonna be operational costs, or, you know, we talked about the possibility of a sinking fund to go ahead and replace turf, you know, so that way it's not gonna be a huge expense all at one time. Um, and so we've kind of built the agreement in a way to make sure that we can do both, we can honor both the seller, and then also look at ways to make sure that we are benefiting the city by maybe taking some of the pressure off the taxpayers that funds some of those expenses that we know we're gonna have later on down the road. So, and we don't have that ability here at the city, we don't do that on a regular basis, we don't have the connections that Colton and Ryan and Mike would have. But we would need somebody to fill that void for us, to help us, um, you know, make those kind of connections.
So say it's a splash pad, the city would have owned that, which would be named as whatever corporate, for X amount of, whatever the contract is.
Yeah, it could be, it could be a car dealership, it could be a bank, it could be the, you know, uh, healthcare facility, whatever that would be. It would be the splash pad by, splash pad by whatever. I mean, the key, the key point is, is, you know, building the relationships. There's, there's a, a great number of businesses in, in the community in McCook. And we would definitely honor the ability to go to them first and work with the city hand in hand, and bring those contracts to fruition, and lay those out, make sure that they maximize the value of the park, but it also gave them the right to come in and be part of that. Um, all the excitement that's going on here, and then make, and then the city, through Nate, would be able to review that and say, yeah, this fits what we're looking for. This fits the, the concept of what we wanna do, and then sign off on it and, and move forward with it. Because we're working hand in hand with you. We're an extension of the city. And, uh, we wanna make sure this really fits, just like in Clyde, that it fits with, what you guys' vision for the park, for the complex.
You know, what we kind of talked about, for example, was, you know, if there was going to be, you know, uh, because I was having a hard time envisioning this, if there's gonna be a Walters complex somehow titled. And I, we have a pretty good idea as far as that would look like in the purchase agreement. Now, how would we go about making sure that we can, you know, get some value? And, and, and what they had said was, will we do that regularly? And we'll have either a sponsor by, and a bank, or powered by M and B. Or whatever it may be, so that way you still are able to go ahead and utilize, uh, or maximize the value of, of the facility and, and what that would bring for maybe some of the individuals or entities that would be interested in, you know. That's, what do they mean with that complex?
That's a pretty general way of doing it, you know, the complex, whatever, powered by Gatorade, you know, just, just for an example. So it honors the family that's involved with it, or the business involved with it, but yet we're still able to utilize the power by to come in and, and add value to it.
So we would have a contract between High Level and the city?
Correct.
And then, so you would read it back just for our.
Yeah, and, and there would be, so the nice thing about this, there's no retainer or anything like that. It's all based upon, you know, what's brought in and get a percentage of that. Um, and so that would be in the contract. And I've got a copy of the contract, but I thought it'd make a lot of sense, probably just to make that, I, I wanted to make sure that the council had the opportunity to speak with High Level and their individual people, so that way, um, you could ask questions.
Is this an ongoing process then, Mike, too, or do you, just like, let's say you, you raise five million dollars, that's it then? That's, you're done, or what? We, we continue to work until we, we maximize the, the complex or the projects, and then we can expand that into other areas that you're going, like your aquatics park. I, I would assume that there's, there's opportunities there. And that's be based off of a one-year or two-year contract that you would sign with, that we would, we would sign with the city to continue to work, work for you.
What would be a realistic number, do you think? And I don't wanna.
No, no, that's a, that's a fair question, because if you take an example like Clyde, let's just say a two million dollar, or twenty million dollar project. What we, what our goal is, is somewhere between that five to ten percent of what we're trying to bring in for naming rights. So that, that'd be about two million dollars, right, if I'm doing my math right?
Yeah, we're to go up to.
So would I.
Me, too.
Mr. Go would definitely say that I was wrong before I even participated. That's why I went to law school.
Yes, he would. Um, but that, that's typically, that mean what we're looking to try to do is raise, you know, between that five to ten percent of the total cost of the project.
Great.
It'd be, it'd be great, I think, for us to have this as an option moving forward, because we don't have those kinds of contacts, or do we have the time to do that? But if we could find somebody that could do that for us, and, and, you know. Well, yeah, anymore you're seeing it all over the place.
Well, I think, I think to your point, you need to be focused on running the city. Your staff needs to be focused on running areas.
That's a loose term, yeah, I don't know, loosely.
But I mean, that allows us to focus on what we do, where we're going, and we, we bring those people to fruition, the businesses to fruition, and land before you say, here, here's what we've got done. Here's the due diligence and the work we've done. What do you think? Does this fit your model of what you're trying to do with this complex, or this, this sports complex?
I agree. Yeah, I think it would be great to have some experts help us out with this.
And what's better than, I mean, this is, you know, here in my heart. I played at the JC, played at Felling Field, great, great places to play. But I've been gone for thirty plus years, I think, is that when I was there? I have my own children, you know, down in Lincoln, and, and, you know, I'm seeing these things happen across the country. And I'm a huge advocate for Nebraska, absolutely from McCook. My family's still here, they still have businesses here. And I, I would love to be able to pass on that legacy to the next generations of my nieces and nephews, and my great nieces and nephews, and even my children and grandchildren, who could, they move back here someday.
And, and you guys have co- uh, experience with other communities in Nebraska?
Oh, yes. We've, we've got the Brettina Project that's going on, uh, the, uh, City Beatrice, we helped raise over six hundred thousand dollars at Hannibal Park. Tobias, um, I, I met with him and, and handed him over, and Ryan and him sat down, and, you know, as you know Tobias, he reviewed everything, got in the eyes and the teeth.
He's an attorney, too.
He's an attorney as well. But he turned it loose, and, and Ryan and, and, and us went to work, and it, you know, he's, he's extremely happy. UVT, or, uh, excuse me, Ultimate Baseball Academy, UVA in Omaha, and the city of Omaha, they have partnership with Fields and, and stuff, and they're, and they're, they're in partnership with us right now, in contract to, to raise about, I think, somewhere between a million and two million dollars when, when it's all said and done. So, it's exciting. I love seeing like, stuff like this happen in Nebraska, so.
Okay, we'll be ready for the rest of the story.
Okay, yep, and so, yeah, we kind of worked through this, there'll be a contract, and we'll come back to the council. Um, and then as we move forward with all the parts and pieces, I don't know exactly, when do you think that you, because we still have to develop the ballpark and whatnot, so what, what would be the opportune time for the contract? Let's say that the con, let's, let's say that we don't start building until a year from now.
I, I think the moment you guys wanna get moving on this, that we have a concept of rendition, that things are laid out that you guys are wanting us to go after, that you put that in our hands.
So should, should, would you wanna have that concept before we actually sign the contract?
I think, I think we wanna have a real good idea of what, where, the direction you're going, and that's so we, we can have the details to be able to go out and talk to people. I mean, not saying we wouldn't go to work before that, I mean, we're, we're already generating ideas and leads of the local businesses, the regional businesses, all the way to the national businesses that we, we have relationships with, because like Clyde, we wanna bring them the same opportunity into McCook. Because you are in a regional, I mean, you're in a demographic area that can have some really neat events here. Some really neat events between Denver, Cheyenne, Wichita, um, you know, even, even east of Omaha and Lincoln, you're gonna draw, you're gonna have a really good draw. And you're right in the middle.
Yeah, you mentioned Clyde, Texas, that's over by Abilene.
Yep.
Um, but like two, two and a half hours away from the Dallas Fort Worth.
I think it's about that, yeah, too, yep.
And it sounds like they draw a few teams.
They have filled their, if I remember right, they're three years out as far as events filled up, their weekends. So, when it, when it happened.
And Abilene's a town of what? Or, sorry, Clyde's a town of.
Just under, just under four, thirty-eight to eleven, I think, is what it is, yeah.
So Clyde's the one that is no reason why the city can't do that.
Oh, I remember the, 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 what was it, the CADA? International, me and my brother played in it. So, what a great concept and idea to bring to McCook. And be able to have a host team in it, and make the teams from Peru and all across the world, so. I really appreciate it. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Ryan and Colton have anything you wanna share?
Ryan, Colton, is there anything you wanna add?
Are you there?
They're there. I think Colton's trying to talk.
Thought we might be having an issue.
I was gonna say, are they, they put.
My suit.
Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect. Mike, you, you touched on everything, um, and did a really good job. The last thing I'll leave you guys with is like, the sooner we can get started, the sooner you guys can see money in the door. Um, and so Mike hit that right on the head to say, like, as you guys come up with concept and everything else, one of the things that we do like to do is help with the negotiations for contracts, like, for example, in that Clyde, Texas project. Um, a large partner was a broadband partner, and I'm sure you guys have heard of Windstream. Um, them having, uh, the infrastructure to run one of the fastest, um, sports complex WiFis in the United States is also one of the big draws. Every kid has a cell phone now, every mom has a cell phone. Uh, we helped negotiate that in trade. There was no cash value there, but as far as upfront expenses, we were able to, I believe it was like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we kept in the city's pocket. So, like I said, anything that we can do to, one, bring you guys money, but two, save you money, that's exactly what we're going to do. Mike, you crushed it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Colton, I don't know if you need to bring up that idea that everybody has a cell phone as a coach. I'd rather see those things just get left at home.
I say, yeah, I agree.
But if, if, because I really hadn't thought of a pool, but if the pool's an option, the pool opens in two weeks.
Did you hear that, Colton?
Uh, absolutely. Ryan, take that. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I've been listening. Um, I think we'd have, we have interest in all of it. We can leverage all those assets and while you guys put together, um, you know, like schematic designs for the, the ballpark and the rest of the sports complex assets, it's really good, because I know everyone's gonna be interested in, you know, as far as our sponsors go, and, and traditional sports, whether that's through baseball, soccer, softball, they might have interest in walking trails or alternative recreation amenities, so it's not abnormal for us to, to work in lockstep with the city, um, in a, in a, uh, I would say a citywide parks and recreation, um, offering that way, you know, no, no stone left unturned, and that way everybody feels like they, uh, as far as businesses go, they might wanna be involved with something, can be involved. And that's not saying that we NASCAR'd the place out, you know, less is more. Um, but, but ultimately, you know, having more resources to, and assets to be able to sell, um, just creates more success and more revenue for, for the municipality.
Great.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, thank you all.
Can you keep these?
Yep.
You better.
Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight-one, amending section ninety-five. Thirty-five weeds, litters, stagnant water. I introduce ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight-one by title, and as the clerk, please read the title.
An ordinance of the city of McCook, Nebraska, amending the city of McCook Code of Ordinances, chapter ninety-five and entitled, nuisance health and sanitation, section ninety-five, twenty-three, five, G, weeds, litters, stagnant water, adding subsection F listings. Listing specific nuisances to provide that this ordinance shall be made a part of the city of McCook Code of Ordinances, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, reviving for the effective date and publication thereof.
Okay, would you want to consider ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight-one upon its second of three readings?
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight-one has been introduced, read by title, I move to approve upon its second of three readings.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor vote A. Post in.
Hey, I do have a question.
I have a question. Wait, we haven't voted. Did you do anything?
I did, I voted.
No. Darcy's not connected. Did you do anything?
I looked at her.
You just looked at her.
I just got it.
Did you refresh it?
Okay, I'm ready. Yeah, I voted twice again.
Yeah, it's, it's, I'm still waiting for Darcy. Did you vote, Darcy? What is your vote?
It's spinning. Could you hit refresh? I guess I did all of it.
Okay, I got it. Five votes, hash J, no votes cast N.
Okay, can we, naming rights for here, we can get a high speed.
Yeah.
Do we have any, any council comments?
Yeah, I, question. Okay, I know you're forming, um, a committee, you know, like with the pool, but will, will we have public meetings for the public?
Yeah.
Okay. You'll talk about that. I mean, I'm sure it's early, but I know you, y'all have a public invite.
Yeah, publicly invited for that.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, there being no further business to come before the council declare the meeting adjourned at six forty-two.